We are in session, so if you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and this is the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I intend to review. There's nothing to add. Okay, our process tonight is a little different. We're doing our student presentations first before we get into the meeting of our meeting. So we'd like to have Principal Andrea introduce the students.
I'd like to welcome the school board members, parents, staff, and community members. We are thrilled to have you all here tonight to learn a little more about Osiphe Central School. This year, our enrollment is 294 students for grades preschool through sixth grade. We continue to focus on all our students learning in a safe and collaborative environment, where students, staff, and families work together to ensure academic success. At OCS, our motto is to be safe, responsible, and respectful. That motto is continually reinforced during our Wildcat pride assemblies, where our mascot, Osiphe, and our sixth-grade spirit squad emulate those qualities to be role models for our younger students. We are thrilled to have our school participate in a responsive classroom consultation to continue our practice of social-emotional learning and multi-tiered systems of behavior. At this school, we have incorporated components of responsive classroom into our daily schedule to ensure students are ready to learn each day. OCS teachers continue to enhance their practices in reading and math by receiving training in the science of reading and implementing our Eureka Square resource as a math resource. Establishing a safe and collaborative environment at OCS also includes our community partners. Our Schools Out program recently had a very successful family food and fun day, with more than 30 families coming out to enjoy our fun activities as a family and even enjoyed a visit from the Osiphe Fire Department. Our students also visited the Center of Osiphe Fire Department to culminate their fire safety week for students in preschool through grade three. Another way we have been engaging with our community is through the Osiphe Police Department. Each morning, we look forward to seeing Officer Llewellyn in our building, greeting students and families outside and then walking around our school building to interact with our staff and students. Her presence in our building allows students and staff to feel comfortable with law enforcement in our building. Some other fun and exciting events we are looking forward to are the upcoming Title I nights and our winter concerts. These are great events that highlight what students have been working on academically and are always well-attended community events. Later this week, we will welcome families in for our conferences to discuss students' academic and work habits growth since the beginning of this school year. This is always very well-attended and such an important component to students' success. So tonight, we have Mrs. Morrell's class, a few student representatives from Mrs. Morrell's class to do an activity with you based on mathematics. As Andrea shared, tonight's presentation is by our fourth grade students here. His teacher is Mrs. Jessica Morrell. Helping them tonight are our math coaches. Now, Osiphe's math specialist is Christine Zimmer, who did not be with us tonight. And so are two other district math coaches, Talia Arselt and Kristi Diamond, who'll be stepping in to help out. Tonight, they are going to be looking at the competency around numbers and quantity, which is to reason, describe, and analyze whole numbers to solve problems. Specifically, the fourth graders you will see tonight will help show you how they can read and write multi-digit numbers using base-ten numerals, number names, and expanded form, and show that they can quickly add and subtract multi-digit whole numbers.
My name is Talia Arselt. I'm one of the math coaches in the district.
And I'm Kristi Diamond, another math coach.
And as Katie said and Andrea too, this year, K-3 schools have been implementing Eureka Math Square as our math curriculum. So part of our job is to go in and work with teachers as they are bringing the math curriculum to the students, making sure that we are developing sense-making in our students and building their conceptual understanding.
Part of this strategy that we're working through this year is meeting with teachers at grade levels three times a year. And in addition to that, in addition to the grade level trainings, as coaches, we're working together with teachers in the buildings to model lessons that are grounded in research-based best practices. And we're also working alongside the teachers, utilizing the curriculum to create sense-making activities, one kind of which you are going to be able to experience tonight.
So thank you so much for welcoming us here tonight. My name, as they said, is Jessica Morrell, and I teach fourth grade here at Osiphe Central School. Tonight, I have a couple students who are brave enough to join me. I have Annie and Brittany, who are excited to share some of their math knowledge with you. Last year, fourth grade teachers across the district had the opportunity to pilot the Eureka Math Square program. And now that we're implementing the program across the district, we see that how closely in alliance with our district's core curriculum for math. One of the benefits of the program is it helps students' critical thinking and problem-solving skills. We want our students to be able to understand the whys and develop a strong foundational skill set. Students can then apply the skills that they've learned to a variety of problems, including more complex ones. One of the ways that our students can strengthen their understanding of math competencies is through math sorts. Get ready, because you're going to get to try it. They enable students to look for patterns and similarities and apply the skills that they've learned to demonstrate their proficiency of the concept. Tonight, we have two different math sorts for you that we've been using in our fourth grade class. Students are going to be coming around to board numbers and share a sort with you. When you get your sort, take a close look at those cards. What do you notice? What do you wonder? Do you see any patterns or similarities? And then try sorting them. If you get stuck, the fourth graders will help you out. So typically, the students would work in pairs to try and look for these patterns. And then, after a set number of minutes, they would do a little gallery walk where they would get to walk around the classroom and see what other groups came up with and how they sorted it. So we're going to skip that part tonight, just in the interest of time. But are there any questions about the sorts that you guys had in front of you or? It depends on the sort. Yep. So you're looking for patterns and any similarities. Like, some of them are all face-showing charts, and then words form, and then expanded form. So you're looking for ways that they would connect and then applying that skill. If you don't mind just putting those back in as a block baggies, we'll try to reuse them again. And Annie and Brittany will be by the collect. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much. That was a lot of fun. Appreciate it. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is approval of minutes. First, they take a motion to... A motion to accept the minutes of the school board meeting for October 2nd. I hear a motion.
I have a couple edits before motions made.
Okay.
Under the chairman's report, under strategic plan, in the third or second sentence? Third sentence, it says, "Upon request from a school, from a board member." That was a board member. I just think it should be stated which board member brought that up. And then, later in the meeting minutes in closing comments, it says, "A personal statement regarding the event." I think it should be delineating which board member mentioned that. I'm pretty sure that's alluded to Ms. Sable's comments. So just so the public's aware, who made those comments?
Okay.
I also wanted to address that particular line. What I would like to do, if there are no objections, I would like to strike the last sentence under closing comments, which reads currently, "A personal statement regarding the event to be held at the Kingswood Arts Center on Monday, October 9th, was made." I would like to strike that sentence. And if there are no objections, I would like to replace it with the following. Board member Sable expressed her concerns regarding public safety and the protection of district assets during the event at the Kingswood Arts Center on 9 October 2023, because I think that much more correctly reflects the gist of my comments. And I have this written down. I'm happy to get it to you. There are no objections.
We can also refer to the recording.
I'll make a motion with those edits made. So with Charlene's update to the last paragraph and including my name as the board member under the chairman's report for strategic planning.
All right, motion by Brody to accept the minutes with the changes specified. Any second. Any other questions on the October 2nd school board minutes? Okay, hearing done, all those in favor. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Here.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Here.
And I was not here, so I will abstain. Thank you. Second set of minutes is for the Building and Maintenance Committee meeting on October 3rd. The members present are Jim Pittman, Dr. Jim Manning, Brody Duches, and Stephanie King. A motion to approve.
I'll make a motion contingent upon, in addition, I had mentioned bringing all our Governor Runworth Regional School District own buildings in Wolfboro to compliance with Wolfboro's lighting ordinances and committed to doing more research on the matter. We could include that to the minutes.
I have a question.
Trying to remember what point in the meeting did you make those?
Probably about five minutes left.
Other business?
Yeah, under other businesses. Something that I had constituents in Wolfboro come to me about, or others, or just lived in town.
Okay. All those in favor approving the Building and Maintenance Committee meeting with the additions? Oh, we didn't have a second. Sorry. Doctor, okay, Dr. Jim, a second. Okay, all those in favor with the additions by Brody, as he was saying aye. We have Jim Pittman?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
And Stephanie?
Yes.
I'm flattered.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, and the last set of minutes to approve was the school board non-public session on October 17th. Do I have a motion on that?
Before I make the motion, at the end of the meeting minutes, not at the adjournment of the vote there, but the discussion and the motion made to resume the regular meeting, I don't remember changing my vote. I remember saying yes. But I do remember stating that I wanted to note that I wanted to noted the objection to some aspects of the meeting being a non-public session. But even still, it's the discussions, statements place there aren't in compliance with our policy of BBDG, which, under Section, subsection 7, state that it needs to have, first, the objecting member's name; second, a statement that the member objected; and third, a quote "reference" to the provision of RSA 91-a-three subsection 2, that was the basis for the objection and discussion quote. And that's state law. So I'd like to table those meeting minutes until our next meeting with those updates and reflections. So I'll make that motion.
All right. All right, the motion is to table the minutes for the October 17th meeting.
The reason for the non-public meeting was for safety planning, emergency safety planning.
Correct.
And that's not currently articulated. It's a sense, discussed personnel legal matters. So if we could add that to the reason why we entered in public.
Okay. All right, well, let's take a motion then to motion and second to table the minutes. And we'll fix these minutes and correct them for the next.
Who seconded the motion?
No, nobody seconded it. Ted, you want to second it? No, you were. This was a non-public session.
I just have a point, Walter. So, before Brody made the motion to table, I had planned on voting no, because I felt that two of the three items should not have been discussed in non-public. So do I now ask that, I mean, should that, how do I, how do we deal with that?
Let's vote to table the minutes. And then, we can, you can ask to have the minutes modified before we vote on the next board meeting.
I made a motion to table, because if we vote no to the meeting minutes, then that's as if the meeting didn't happen. So it's better to table, because a meeting did happen, and there were discussions there that we need to have a non-public. And some of us disagree with some of the other discussions. And I just want to reflect it in these meeting minutes per the state RSA, who objected, why, and under what part of the state law they did. And I'd also like my vote reflected, because I don't remember changing my vote. Maybe I did, but I don't want to have my vote changed in the meeting minutes. And so then, it's a proper reflection of what happened. So table again, do it, retaking it up at the next meeting with the edits. Is, am I any more advantageous?
So, I can't, I didn't express my objection at the time. So what procedure is there for me to object to a couple of the things that I feel should have been discussed in public?
That's regulated under our policy of BBDG. You don't have to include it in the meeting minutes and does with table. And I assume you would contact the administrative office and ask?
Yeah, I think we table the minutes at this point, then contact the SADU office with your specific items. And they'd be included in the next month's meeting minutes. And then hopefully, they'll be corrected at that point.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to table the minutes for October 17th. A motion by Brody and seconded by Tom, to table the minutes. All those in favor of table the minutes for the October 17th, the non-public meeting. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Dr. Jim?
I choose.
Thank you, okay. Okay. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair was aye to table as well. Okay. All right, the last item we will approve right now is the manifest to approve. And the manifest that is being signed tonight, the accounts payable manifest is $2,63,532.64. The payable manifest being approved for the end of September, October, for a total approval tonight of $4,798,108.90. A motion to approve the manifest.
Second.
Okay, move back to Jim, seconded by Brody. Okay, all those in favor approving the manifest, again, in total, $4,798,108.90. Someone was saying aye. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair was aye as well. Okay. Okay, moving on, we will now go into public input. Public input, we have two sessions, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting, for 15 minutes each. We ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes per individual, so everyone has an opportunity to speak. And we'll take the first person, please come up to the mic, state your name and the town the children, the town. Yes.
My name is Bob Levy, and I'm from Osiphe, New Hampshire. I live in Osiphe, Montana State, behind Adam's garden. I'm going to read, my wife could make it, because we have five kids at home. So I'm going to read what she wrote, and then I will give my statement after. Says, "Initial complaint, bus driving, screaming, yelling, and threatening our bus, out the bus window at my child on the late bus run, and neighborhood children on elementary run. Didn't wait for thumbs up, suggested bus safety class, since it seems that more than one child didn't know the rules. We followed due process, timeline, 10:30, 23, 10:05 a.m." She reported a complaint with a follow-up to the bus administrator. 10:31, 23, at 2:03, Sue called back and said that they looked at the cameras, said the driver was yelling, addressing the whole bus. I said, she said, "Look at both routes again. They didn't get back to me." On 10:31, 23, did agree to put the bus safety plan into place. 11:02, 23, after waiting two days for email, the superintendent, from the superintendent with all the complaints, I had CCD her on, oh, she copied her on the following, up emailed to the transportation department. 11:31, 23, she called the superintendent, since she hadn't heard from them. Secretary said she would look at it at 2:53 p.m., said transportation would call. 11:32, 3, at 4:12 p.m., transportation called and said kids could take a different route. If they didn't like the route that they were on, they would have to be taken over to Deer Cove or Carroll County Road. We stated at that time, I stated at that time, that was not a viable process, because we have kids two years old, four years old, six years old, 11 years old, in the household. And we can't leave, just leave every time. Most of the children in the household are foster children. So we have to be very careful what goes on with them. I have seen the screaming at the, from the bus driver. I'm not going to mention any names. The superintendent and the other person knows who they are. It's only one person. That same person, when they lived in our park, complained weekly about the buses being in there. Now that she is driving in there, she goes down this My Street, which is Parkland Lane, and she's always over the speed limit. It's five miles an hour in that bar. I'm an ex-police officer. Now, you know how to judge speed going down the road. She drives about 25 to 30 miles an hour going down our road, every morning and every afternoon. We made the complaint, and it seems to be going on deaf ears. That's why I'm here tonight. I told the superintendent today that I was going to be here and made a formal complaint to see what you people could do about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any others who'd like to speak? Can state your name and town, please?
I'm Terry Lackey, and I actually live in Middleton. And I'm a full-time school bus driver for Governor Al Gore. This is Tim BoMeller. We are both co-presidents of the Governor Runworth Sports Staff Association. We take our jobs very seriously, because we keep our kids safe going to and from school, to sporting events. Our kids have great opportunities in the district. Um, our kids have great opportunities in the district, and we're proud to get the kids where they need to go and get everything they need from the schools. Um, our union represents about one hundred and thirty employees, who do everything from preparing meals, to helping to save the students' learn, to answering the phones, to keeping the hallways clean. We're here tonight to follow up on a letter that I sent to you all by email on October thirty-first. In that letter, I asked the board to grant across the board raises, to restore extra pay for covering for teachers, and to help our part-timers. The issue that we're facing, as you know, is a staffing crisis. Today, there's sixty-five job openings on the website, including a secretary, three custodians, four bus drivers, and twenty-three par educators. We know every school district is having a hard time hiring, but some are having harder than others. Governor Walnuts is having a harder time, because our wages are not competitive. We pay bus drivers eighteen dollars an hour, we pay par professionals less than seventeen. When we point out the low wages, the district usually says, yes, but you have good benefits. Those of us that are lucky enough to work thirty hours or more, we do get affordable medical benefits, but benefits don't pay the bills. And we do have folks that can't pay the bills. And we feel the district can afford to pay us a living wage. It's sad that it doesn't, even more sad is that over fifty district employees don't qualify for any benefits at all. They're considered part-timers, they don't get medical insurance, sick leave, disability insurance, or even paid leave for jury duty. It's not because they don't want those things, it's because the district won't give them thirty hours of work, so they qualify for benefits. Would you be surprised to learn that Governor Walnuts, Walnuts is paying some par professionals more than ten dollars more an hour than the wages in our collective bargaining agreement? The district was so desperate for par professionals, when the district couldn't find them, they reached out to a Florida company, Sunba. They found par professionals when the district couldn't. Contractor pays his employees twenty-five to thirty dollars an hour with benefits, not seventeen dollars an hour. All support staff should be paid as well as these contracted employees, but we would be satisfied with Governor Walnuts paying somewhat better wages. The differences between surrounding districts and Governor Walnuts are alarming. Just this year, we lost two long-term employees from this building alone to Conway School District for more money and bulk benefits. Those employees took with them decades of experience and skill in helping some of our most challenged students. I did bring tonight the wage schedule from the Conway Educational Support Personnel, our closest large district in comparison to us. The differences are big, and Conway offers full medical insurance and paid leave. I'm a full-time bus driver with twenty years of experience. Eight years ago, I had the opportunity to apply for a position here. Governor Walnuts was the employer of choice for any bus driver back then. The pay was decent, had good benefits. It's not by the phone, in the hopes that I would be selected for the position of the many applicants that were received at that time for that one position. And I was hired in two thousand sixteen, and since then, we have endured so much. We survived COVID-nineteen, with most of us staying on board despite the health concerns. We stayed on board even though other jobs that are much less intense, with little or no responsibilities, pay as much or more than our jobs in this district. The applicants aren't coming in. My supervisor is receiving little or no applicants, and when they do come in, shock of our wages turns them back up the door. People cannot survive on these wages, and since other employers are paying more, the jobs continue to stay unfilled. Students with special needs don't have the support they need. Drivers like me are exhausted, everybody's exhausted. The support staff positions available on the website are concerning, it's not fair to the kids. It puts us all in higher risk for an unsafe condition. Our members in the support staff are tremendous. They're steadfast, dedicated, and passionate about this school district and its students. The district should show our members that they are passionate about them. Please grant the raise that we've requested, restore the extra pay for when they cover for teachers, and give our part-time employees some benefits, give us some relief. I heard a supervisor say last week, I feel like I'm running a sinking ship. I think it's time that we right the ship, and get back to becoming that employer of choice. Thank you for your time.
Can you, can you share the information you have from Conway?
I shall, yes. You want me to?
I just wanted to quickly add, I also know that the teacher, uh, did send a letter in support of the Support Staff Association.
Okay, we'll take a couple more minutes, and then we'll have, yeah, more public input at the end of the meeting. Uh, is anyone, would anyone else like to speak?
Hi. I didn't make it into Toastmasters, so you'll have to be patient with me. Hello, everyone. It's great to see you all up here.
Just say name and town.
Thanks for being here. Uh, my name is Susan Rogers, and I'm from Tocqueville, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
I'm a resident and a paraprofessional here at OCS. This is my sixth year at Ospeen. I hold an associate's degree in early childhood education and a bachelor's degree in psychology. I work in a specialized behavioral program with emotionally disabled children. When I was hired in two thousand eighteen, my pay was based on zero to three years' experience in a public school setting. Six years later, I'm still being paid in that zero to three years' experience in a public school setting. The method of compensation is myopic, it leaves a little ability for someone with this experience in education to remain here at sixteen forty-one an hour. And then I had a question, um, was there a balance, what is the balance owed by the district to the town of Wolfboro for the emergency services for October sixth, for the campaign, if that number's available? Thank you.
Hey, anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll have public input at the end of the meeting, uh, we'll move on with the rest of our meeting at this point, thank you. Okay, uh, our student representative report.
I think I'd be better at this considering what I do. Hello, everybody, glad to be back with you again. Um, for anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Elliot Giesler, I am a senior at Kingswood Regional High School, and I'm the student representative on the school board. Uh, at Kingswood, we have just gotten through what was a pretty busy league last week, and now things are winding down a tad. I would first like to start by congratulating all the fall sports, um, all their seasons are officially over. Uh, congrats to teams such as soccer, volleyball, who made some nice playoff runs of their own, um, and winter sports tryouts will mostly be this month, games will not be starting until December. Uh, moving over to the arts department, uh, Beauty and the Beast will be going up on November seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. Um, we'd love to see you all there. Kids have been working very hard for the past two and a half months, um, on this show, it's, I've, I'm gonna brag a little bit. I've been at a lot of shows in my life, and I cannot say that I have been in too many shows with a cast as talented as this one, so we would love to see you all there, and I guarantee you will not regret it. Um, the KRHS Christmas concert will be on Friday, December first. Uh, the KRHS band will also be performing in the Wolfboro Christmas Parade, um, and additionally, many of the elementary schools and the middle school will also be having their, uh, Christmas concerts in the art center as well. Um, parentage conferences will be coming, uh, later this week, so students are on their best behaviors, trying to make sure that, you know, nothing bad gets said to mom and dad. Um, obviously no school on the second half of Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Uh, with the first come over, the interim grades are going in, so once again, students stressing about mom and dad and everything. Um, not too much else to talk about, surprisingly, despite how busy things have been, there are not too many points a quarter to go over, but I can just say that, um, as with before, the culture within the building and the overall attitude of the student body seems to be very good as we enter into our third month of school, and I see no signs of that slowing down, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to start with our assessment presentation with Dr. Katie Hills, our Director of Curriculum. What do you think? So tonight, I'm going to give you our annual assessment update, we're gonna talk about what we're doing, as well as the results of our testing from last spring and last I'd actually like to start with some celebrations. We start our administrative team meetings every month with celebrations, so I'm taking a page from that book, and celebrating the good things happening now in curriculum instruction and assessment. In the areas of K through twelve curriculum and assessment, K through eight is busy inventorying and validating assessments. Last year, they worked very hard at aligning essential stand- aligning essential standards to the competencies, taking a hard look at really what is essential to know, and unpacking those. And so this year, we started with our grade level meetings, looking at the assessments that we give in our classrooms, and we'll move into later this year, validating those, or checking to make sure, do our assessments actually assess or measure what we want our students to learn? The high school has also been busy. Last year, over the past couple of years, they've been busy with drafting and finalizing competencies, and aligning their essential standards. They are now in the process of finishing that process, and then unpacking those standards, so that they can move into the inventorying and validating assessments as well. In the areas of K through twelve instruction, already, and I'm gonna talk about these more specifically later on, but already, we've seen some early successes with our K through three early adopters. They are looking at using a new, uh, process and program for K through three literacy, and already, we've seen successes. I'm gonna talk more about math in general, but we've had a great first math launch day, so that has been positive for both teachers and the coaches who have been facilitating that. And as you got to experience this evening, our math coaches are busy in classrooms, working with teachers on developing and implementing student sense-making activities, to make it more engaging, and to make the learning stick. Some additional celebrations, all academic coordinators, department heads, and, uh, the new principal, Paul Fanglari, at the high school, participated in a training last spring or over the summer on leading the shift to competency-based education in your school. This was put on, facilitated by Hampshire Learning Initiative. Two weeks ago, the group had a follow-up meeting, also facilitated by NHLI, to continue the discussion, before we roll it out to the full staff. Additionally, both Erin Daggett, who, not to put you on the spot, but, uh, the high school's curriculum project manager, and I are going to see Rick Formelli in early February. He will discuss best practices around grading in a competency-based education system. The middle school and elementary schools adjusted their master schedules to promote wellness and learning. At our middle school, the new schedule limits transitions and distractions, allows for advisory time to build relationships between adults and students, and increases instructional time in academic courses. At the elementary level, principals work to build master schedules that balance the benefits of morning meeting and closing circle, both staples of our social emotional learning programs that promote wellness and positive relationships, with adequate instructional time to meet the needs of teaching also varies with fidelity. Finally, I recently unveiled a public curriculum instruction and assessment site, which provides family-friendly documents and information around grade level curriculum, competency-based assessment, competency-based education, assessment, and our K through eight grading platform, which is called Jump Rope. You can dig into it more on your own, but I'm going to give you a very brief tour. To access it, you're going to go to our district's homepage. You're going to go to the About GWRSD tab, and click on Curriculum. And then just scroll down to where you see Governor Walnuts and Middleton, Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, and click on that link. Again, you'll have time to dig up into this on your own, I'll link this presentation, um, and you can always access the website. But overall, you can see, um, information about anything from competency-based education, including a glossary for families who are unfamiliar with the terms. Curriculum documents for all of our grade levels, as the high school is continuing to work on finalizing these, we will add these, but you can see for elementary and middle school, those are up there, and you can access each one of those either by grade level and/or subject area. We have information on Jump Rope, so Jump Rope, again, is our K through eight grading platform. You can find out more about what it does, and what it measures, and there's a link here to videos, every week I'm posting a new video, uh, for families, so that they can learn more about either how to navigate Jump Rope, different features of Jump Rope, or something specific about competencies for competency-based education. And after this meeting, I'll be populating the assessment tab as well, so that we have that date information on our assessments. So I invite you to look at that on your own time. So looking at our assessment data from this past spring, the New Hampshire State Assessment, which tests both math and reading for our students in grades three through eight. I share this graph with you in your pocket. One thing I'd like to highlight is that between two thousand fifteen and two thousand twenty-one, the average percentage of fourth graders who were proficient or above was forty-one point eight percent, nearly not high enough. Last year, our courageous fourth grade team piloted Eureka Math Square, just like this. Um, and Eureka Math Square is the updated version of our primary math resource, Eureka Math. So Eureka Math Square is the next level. The new resource is streamlined to provide a greater focus on foundational grade level skills, while coherently weaving in secondary skills. It also is more user-friendly, and embeds more sense-making strategies into lessons. We chose grade four as a pilot team because the content, the math content in grade four, becomes more abstract, and we have typically seen it dip at that level. Last year, after piloting Eureka Math Square, fifty-three percent of our fourth graders were proficient or above on the state assessment. So their average over the past seven years was forty-one point eight, fifty-three percent last year. That's exciting and good news, as we roll out Eureka Math Square to the rest of our K through eight population. The panel will enter standby fifty-seven. Here is another view of our math data. This chart shows the percentage of students scoring proficient or above for the state of New Hampshire, which is the dark blue column, our district, which is the light blue column, and three districts with similar demographics from the state. Conval, which is the light orange, Conway, which is the dark orange, and Merrimack Valley, which is the green. At the elementary level, for grades three through six, we are consistently above the other New Hampshire districts with similar demographics, and a majority are above the state average. A huge thank you goes to our math coaches, provided intervention for students and coaching for teachers in the past two years, um, their, their support has, does not go unnoticed. The last two show our middle- The last two, to our middle school, they are below the state average in most of the other districts with similar demographics. While they do have some work to do, we have a consistent math coach working with them this year. We have no new math staff. And they have access to the updated version of our primary resource, which again emphasizes more student sense-making learning and less teachers stand and deliver instruction. As such, I do anticipate that we will see those scores improve. Again, this is our state data for ELA from last spring. I included this in your packet. The state average for proficiency for these grade levels is around 50%. So our students are performing around that average, although I and I think probably all of us would prefer it to be higher. And we are working on that. We've made some significant changes at K through three with how we teach foundational reading skills. And if you aren't aware, reading is not just reading the books that you can read. It's tied to spelling, it's tied to writing, it's tied to comprehension, it's tied to getting, just even getting the words off the page. What do the letters sound like? What do they make? We are focusing our instruction on practices aligned to the science of reading, which has decades of research to support it. And we have worked hard to ensure that every teacher is trained in these approaches. I met with elementary principals this summer to talk about ensuring that there is adequate time in the master schedule to allow for instruction. Because if you can't read, you can't do much else. You can't move on to higher grades and get into the content. Every elementary school this year has early adopters at K through three. Some schools have all teachers signed on as early adopters. We're actually ahead of the curve on this one. It's exciting. Even more exciting is the fact that teachers who participate in the training are so enthusiastic that they want to implement what they've learned right away and are clamoring for more PD on the topic. Well, we've had a few teachers who've been implementing IMSC for a couple of years. This is our first official early adoption year. And principals and teachers are already reporting greater progress in reading skills than they've seen at this point in past years. So again, as we increase our students' ability to read, we'll be able to see their reading proficiency levels increase in state testing and in other types of testing. High school is a little bit different. As you know, they take as 10th graders the PSAT and our 11th graders take the SAT. While these reports, particularly in math, aren't where we want them to be yet, we are making strides on our high school curriculum work. The English department did an amazing job last year of analyzing their curriculum, unpacking and aligning standards, and even having early discussions around best practices in assessment. They are really leading the way and trailblazing in that school. This work will undoubtedly translate into increased student achievement. As the math department further engages in this work and with the help of an updated and aligned curriculum and a dedicated math coach, Talia, who you met earlier, is at the high school, I expect to see increases in math achievement as well. So what are some of our next steps? We know we want to raise achievement. We know that also achievement is not simply what our students can do in one single test. But what are we doing overall for math and reading? We are continuing ongoing remediation using ExactPath. This is our third full year of using that. ExactPath replaces NEEW, diagnosing areas of student strengths and needs. NEEW also diagnoses student areas of strength and need. But what ExactPath does is this next step of providing personalized remediation and practice in those areas. They're called personalized learning paths. ESTER funds cover the cost of ExactPath for the last three years. So I removed NEEW from my budget when we switched to ExactPath, but I am adding ExactPath back to my budget proposal in NEEW's place, given the expiration of that ESTER funding. So you'll hear me talk about this again next week. I've shared this graphic last year as it provides a nice overview of what ExactPath measures and the data that I will show in just a minute. I'll be showing you the national percentile ranks, our grade level proficiencies for grades one through eight, and our average growth last year. The last pink triangle is the L-PEN or the Learning Path Entry Grade. This data, which I will not be sharing tonight, is especially helpful for teachers because for each overarching topic in math and reading, ExactPath provides information on what grade level skills a student is targeting remediation and practicing, which can inform classroom groupings, it can inform the interventions that a teacher is providing. And most especially, ExactPath creates a specialized personalized learning path that students can work on independently. Looking first at NPR or National Percentage Rang. This compares our students against a nationally normed sample assessed in the study. So imagine if you will that Caleb is a fifth grade student. The score report says that he has a national percentile rank of 83. This means that Caleb is scoring higher than 83% of other fifth graders nationally. That's good thing. We want to see greater numbers of our students scoring between the 50th and 99th percentiles. You can see that last year, between the first test and the spring test, between fall and spring, we saw a positive trend toward higher NPR ranks. On the spring diagnostic, 60% of our students scored at the 50th percentile or higher in math and 62% of students scored the 50th percentile or higher in reading. In both subjects, on the spring assessment, the greatest percentage was in the highest percentile band, which is a good thing to see. This is also a slight increase from the previous school year's spring results, when it was 59 and 60% in math and reading respectively. This is just another view of the increase in the percentage of our students scoring in those top two quartiles. Again, that's where we want our students to be is above. Another look is at grade level proficiency. It is what it sounds like. It's measuring whether students are on track to meet, if you're testing in the fall or the winter, or in the spring, if they are meeting grade level proficiency targets. Please note that high school is not included in this particular report because the national or state high school standards in math and reading are not organized by grade level, but rather by grade level spans or by topics. So ExactPath is one of the tools allowing us to address learning gaps in specific grade level proficiency so that more students are meeting grade level benchmarks throughout the year. And finally, looking at growth. The reality is that not all students may reach grade level proficiency targets over the course of one year, especially if they come with larger gaps. But the ExactPath data shows us that more students than not are closing the gap to proficiency. In math, the average typical growth is 58.6 points over the course of the year. Our average growth last year was 74.7. So our students are closing that gap. In reading, we have 48.7 as the typical and 63.9. So in both of these, our average growth is over 15 points higher than the typical average growth, which is a good sign. In addition to our ExactPath remediation, we are doing a lot of continuing and enhancing math and math coaching. In June and then twice in August, we offered three-hour trainings on the updated Eureka Math Square resource. Our math coaches worked together to help teachers navigate the new platform, dig into the teacher resource, and discuss student sense-making activities now embedded in Eureka Math Square. In our math launch days, this picture is of one of our kindergarten teachers participating. Grade level groups come together for a half-day once a trimester to preview upcoming units, build activities, learn from the coaches, and collaborate and practice together. We're also hoping to do some of these days for parent professionals and special education teachers as they work with our students just as much as our classroom teachers. We've developed targeted coaching cycles, which are six-week to seven-week cycles in which our math coaches focus on teachers from three grade levels only so they can really dig in and target them. During these targeted cycles, the coaches provide infant modeling, co-teaching, goal setting, and feedback. And finally, stack up the option to participate in two guided book reads. You can see here, one is Building Thinking Classrooms in Mathematics by Peter Hilleidall and the other is Limitless Minds by Joe Bowler. While these are math book club reads, the ideas and strategies highlighted in these two books can transfer across subject areas. So it's very powerful. I highly recommend reading both. I have extra copies at the office if you'd like to borrow them to read. The coaching that our coaches and many of our teachers received from Carolyn Horster of Math &amp; Howard gave us a coaching model to recreate for our district. And we've been implementing that this year and the feedback has been positive from staff. At our last admin team meeting, the three math coaches actually came to the meeting. They provided an overview of what a math class should look like or sound like. And the administrators actually had an opportunity to engage in a sense-making activity that had us thinking and talking about math. The work our coaches is doing is powerful and I've asked for their position to be extended in my budget proposal. I predict that their work with the staff and students will translate into improved math achievement because I've already seen an increased student engagement and excitement around math. Last year and continuing this year, we had a hard-working and committed literacy committee that investigated resources, made curriculum updates, explored aligned assessments, and planned a doable lesson framework for K through three. The committee will continue our work this year, working on updates for grades four through six that align the science of reading and best practices. We'll also continue thinking about planning for early adoption for that group and full adoption for our K through three cohort. We selected a literacy benchmarking program called the Cadence, in alignment with the science of reading. And it measures specific foundational reading skills at the appropriate developmental levels nicely. It also meets the state's requirements around the updated Dyslexia Screening Law. And reading specialists have reported that it is quicker and easier to use and that it measures what we are trying to assess. We're also continuing to provide staff with ongoing development and support. Again, all teachers are taking or have taken the initial training. It's an intensive 30-hour training, so it can be very daunting. But those who complete it want to take the next course, so even if they don't have to. Finally, our curriculum updates and instructional practices around literacy benefit all children. Children with a natural propensity toward reading will become stronger readers and those who struggle will become readers. The research shows that the key is explicit systematic direct instruction aligned to the science, and that's what we're providing. Almost there. At the high school, we continue our journey to a competency-based education. In January and April, we will have NHLI facilitate discussions with the full high school staff around best practices of grading. We also have a team comprised of teachers, guidance, technology staff, as well as Erin and me, exploring grading platforms that allow for grading and reporting in a competency-based system. We are looking at four major platforms, Alma, Power School, Infinite Campus, and Jump Rope. And what we've discovered is that it warrants a much larger conversation around our student information system, which impacts PK through 12, or even school through 12. Especially at the secondary level, the connections and integrations between dynamic scheduling, transcripts, reports, learning management systems, and grading and reporting are more tightly linked. So looking at a system that can do all of these things is an important consideration. So as my team continues exploring the grading side of things, Dr. Eric Kelly and Heather Cummings are compiling a team of cadence stakeholders to look at student information systems. Together, we'll keep you posted on our findings and our decisions. But as this is a much bigger undertaking and potential change, we've shifted our timeline a little bit. We'll make our decisions around a grading platform and possible SIS later this winter. Charlie, an SIS is student information system. Next year, Erin and I, along with trainers from the chosen platform, will provide training to staff in using the program for grading. Guided staff will receive training in creating and generating reports and transcripts. If we pursue new SIS, as part of this, all staff who utilize that system would also need training and there would be a migration of data to the new system. And in addition, Erin and I will be working to provide information about competency-based education and the new grading platform to families so that when it is fully implemented in the 25, 26 school year, we and our larger community are ready. You'll note the significance of the work ahead. And I will be requesting that we extend Erin's position another year when I present my budget proposal next week. They've certainly made a great deal of progress in the past few years and we're that much closer to meeting the goal. Finally, the superintendent's goals and our work with Portrait of a Learner and our strategic plan all have in common academic achievement as a goal. We've had numerous meetings, work sessions, trainings, and discussions around this common theme. And as Mary says, where we place our time and energy is what we value. And we value academic achievement. It's important to know that these district initiatives also include achieving wellness as a priority. And we know that the work around wellness further promotes academic achievement. Are there any questions?
Katie, thank you so much, Dr. Hope. Thank you so much for that amazing presentation. It's so helpful to see all of what's going on. And will we get to see a copy of that?
Yes, I will. I'm giving a copy to Kathy to post on the website.
Perfect. One question I have, so you mentioned grading in a competency-based system as being a significant decision. And you also recently put out a letter about power law and you being used in Jump Rope.
Yes.
As a mom, what I've seen is my students saying, "Well, that means I don't really have to try hard in the beginning because it only, there's a decaying values and it only matters what I did at the end." If you could explain for us K-8 parents that a little bit more because it wasn't really, I didn't really understand what it was saying in the letter.
Yes, and there will be in two weeks, I'm going to be doing a video on power law. The power law takes into account all of the scores that a student has in a given competency and is looking at a trend. It is similar to a decaying average. It is going to give more weight to later assignments because a student has had more time to practice a given skill. But that doesn't mean that it totally disregards what the student did earlier in the learning progression. There is a fancy algorithm that, as you know, I can't describe the algorithm. But really what it's doing is it's looking at that pattern. It's taking into account what the student has done over a period of time. And it's basically saying, based on this data that we have and the evidence in front of us for this student and this given competency, where would the student be right now? What is their most accurate level of proficiency?
So it depends on having multiple assignments for each competency, then?
It does.
Okay. Which isn't always the case.
No, we do tell her, you know, one of the things about grading, though, in any type of grading platform, you know, you need to have three points of data. And our teachers know that over the course of a learning period, they need to have three points of data. At least, some of them have much more.
All right, another follow-up question. So in terms of ExactPath, if you've seen it on the ground, I can tell you all the students I've talked to, really, it's the bane of their existence. But I understand that it creates that personalized learning plan. But that personalized learning plan depends on a student performing their best on that initial assessment, correct?
It does, but we have, you know, for those, I'm anticipating your next question. What happens if a student does what she does or her best? Teachers can override that. So they can get how a student is performing in the class. And they can say, "Actually, you do know this." And they can adjust the personalized learning path to a different skill.
First, thank you for creating the report about math coaches as we'll be giving at the hearings. And I look forward to seeing that, as we discussed that last book. It's great to see the performance in the district and the difference our staff are making. I just have one request and one question. My one request would be if you could add tutoring resources that the state offers to parents, some kind of link where the curriculum is. Because not every parent is going to have the non-social care to parents, you know, working full-time, being of the access of state. those state tutoring resources. No one's using them. The state should, you know, improve its outreach, or at least encourage school districts to improve their outreach, so that might be a great opportunity to help the state advertise those programs. And then my question is, I feel like I asked this last year, but I'm going to ask it again because I don't remember, and I'm going to note it down. I'm not going to ask it again next year, which is...
It's a waste of you.
Yeah, I always see a trend, starting on like third or fourth, there's a trend upward towards sixth grade, and then we see the dip seventh and eighth, and then, you know, we see a trend back up throughout high school. And what, in your professional opinion, is leading to that, and what do we need to do as a district, or will we be doing as a district to improve that? I mean, I remember when I went to seventh and eighth grade, it's a culture shock. You have a lot of students set up, there were a lot of stress just getting to school because of how time-consuming it is, and our only preparation I remember was Bridge Day. So we went and we hung out on line tee and camp for a day. They gave us lunch, and that was our introduction to all of our peers, and they're like, "All right, awesome, Lacy baby, like, we'll see you in seventh grade." So I'm wondering what we're doing, because that may relate to this dip.
So yes, certainly, when you go from sixth grade to the middle school, it is a big transition. For most of our students, they're coming together, they're in larger classes by and large, when all of our schools come together. For many, it does involve travel, and for many, it requires getting up earlier than they've been used to. That being said, you know, we have talked about transitions, we continue to do Bridge Day, but the middle school, rather, does a great job sending students from their seventh grade out to every single sending sixth-grade group to talk about what can you expect here. Our middle schoolers, all our sixth graders, sixth graders, rather, all get a chance to come and visit, not only the middle school and get a tour, but they're also getting to tour the Lakes Region Technology Center, so we can start thinking about some of those programs that they might want to access in the middle school or rather than high school. On a larger, you know, transition's a big piece, and that's something I know that the Strategic Planning Committee is thinking about and talking about, because how do you hook the kids in earlier is important. We typically do see the dip in the middle school, and again, all of those factors play a part. We have a dedicated Talia Nadal being at the high school, she's also our middle school coach, so she's secondary and carpenter, so she actually gets a little bit of the very, at either end. But that would be very, that's promising. We've already had several conversations about some good conversations. She's half with teachers, been doing a book read. So just continuing to get students engaged in math, continuing to make sure that they're doing their best. We've never been a district that has, you know, lived or died by the state test, so we don't want students to feel that if they don't do well on those, that it's a mark that they are in any way deficient. It's one measure, and it's a tough measure, to be honest. But we're going to continue to do our best to make sure that our students are moving that level of proficiency up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comment? Thank you, Katie. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That'd be glad. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Hills, for that comprehensive presentation. So happy to hear all the celebrations and mentioning wellness and progress. Thank you very much. So first, superintendent district update, I've included that in the packets. I'll highlight a couple pieces. We had our safety and security task force meeting, the meeting of the fall, that was last Thursday, and the purpose of that meeting was to plan for tabletop exercises that Homeland Security officials and our administrators will participate in in the spring. So that was a planning meeting, and it was very well attended by law enforcement and fire from all of our towns. I also want to highlight our safe grant proposal submissions. We have, I believe, we have six schools who've already submitted applications, so three per school in each of the categories. The link went live on Monday, a week from today, a week ago today, and so we're excited. Those are first in and first out now, rather than how they were in the last round. So we're looking forward to hearing back from the state on those safe grants. And we're well underway with the budget process at the SA level, looking forward to our finance meetings next week. And finally, as Elliot Heesler already mentioned, we have Beauty and the Beast, and I believe you're starring as the beast in the show, so you have to go see it. Very, very exciting. So yes, 17th, 18th, and 19th, and for all ages. Any questions on the superintendent district update this month? Okay, also in the packet, some field trips for your information. The first two are out of state. The first one is a high school trip to the Holocaust Memorial in Boston. That will be on November 16th. Next, Crescent Lake Band and Chorus will be going to the Blue Man Group. That's a day trip in February. And finally, the grade five from Effingham. This is an overnight anna estate. They're going to Seco Main for an oncology school, and that is not until June. So that is for the board's information. Moving right along, next, the high school graduation survey results. So last spring, per the board vote, we were asked to survey the parents of seniors this fall to determine the interest of this graduating class, these families. So this survey went out to all the parents of the 151 seniors, 49% response rate. We had 74 responses, and we offered three options. One was to continue to hold graduation outside on the alumni field on Friday, June 14th at 6:00 PM, with a rain date of Saturday, June 15th at 10:00 AM with unlimited seating. Forty-four people and 59% selected this option, option one. Option two was to have a fixed date of Friday, June 14th at 6:00 PM, and move inside the art center with limited seating should it rain. That would be four guest tickets per graduate. It's the Friday-only option. Eight people, eight parents, selected that option. And finally, option three was to hold graduation outside on Saturday, June 15th at 10:00 AM with a rain date of Sunday, June 16th at 10:00 AM. So that's a Saturday, Sunday option, and 22 parents indicated they preferred that option. So the current plan and the majority is to go with option one, with continue to hold graduation outside on Friday at 6:00 PM with a rain date of Saturday, June 15th at 10:00 AM. So we will hold a graduation as planned. Next, on the superintendent report, are the superintendent goals, and this is for the board's information and discussion and action. So I've included three goals in your packets. The first is competency-based learning. The superintendent will work closely with the SA team and building leaders to implement our comprehensive plan for our competency-based learning initiative, including assessment, reporting, creating opportunities for extension and remediation, communication, and stakeholder outreach. I've included the superintendent indicator 3.3 that addresses this area that a superintendent is responsible for. This is, this goal and this second goal are goals that I'm proposing to continue for this year and next year, making them three-year goals. The second of the three-year goals is safety and security. The superintendent will work closely with the SA team, building-level administrators, and the GW-RSD school board to identify and resolve safety and security needs through board policy, relationships with local police and fire departments, and homeland security plans and regional contacts. And you can see the two indicators that address this area. And then finally, a new goal that would be a two-year goal, long-range planning, to lead and oversee a comprehensive, long-range planning initiative for the Governor Wentworth Regional School District, integrating the Portrait of a Learner framework, strategic planning, and stakeholder engagement to shape a learner-centric educational environment and a culture of belonging. So this is addressed under two indicators, indicator 7.4 and 8.1.
Okay, so this is the superintendent's goal, and this is an action item to approve the superintendent, these goals for the superintendent to continue to pursue over the next couple of years.
Have you moved to accept?
Okay, it's moved by Jim Pepin to accept.
Second.
Seconded by Mary. Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Eric Kelly, for these goals. I am suggesting a modification to the second one, and this is just an observation that you've done an exceptional job of hardening the schools in terms of the safety and security by, kind of, from a responsive end, how do we, you know, working with law enforcement and local PD and fire, homeland security, emergency operation planning, that sort of thing. But what is really, I think, integral to that is the school climate, multi-tier systems of support and behavioral wellness, which is such an important part of safety and security to mitigate threats from within, and attention to that, I think, is paramount in this day and age, and especially in our district. And I would propose that we, that you incorporate that into that second goal, that you consider that emotional safety and psychological safety, and how we can address behavioral wellness and school climate as part of that safety goal.
Thank you. I agree, mental health is a safety issue. So without words spoken on the spot, I, performance anxiety, I will, yes, agree to integrate into this goal. Resolve safety and security needs through board policy, relationships, common security plans, and add, address mental health and psychological...
Do you want to take, try to incorporate that equally?
Yeah. Well, if the board agrees, I'll add a clause to address those within that goal.
Yeah, I think that probably makes sense. If you're in agreement with that, we can approve the goals as they're written with the superintendent and the comments from tonight, and you can bring back the full proposal next month for review.
That's my suggestion. How's the thing? I would still ask for a question.
Yeah, oh yeah. I was going to say, I didn't receive this, it wasn't in our meeting packets prior to the meeting. So, I mean, this is pretty, at least for me, you know, I like to build a sleep on something for our evenings. So I'm going to abstain from the vote, just because of the person I've seen, nothing to ask whether or not it's a good plan, but just...
Okay. Mary?
Thank you, and I... I would just like to add, I felt embedded because of my participation with the district's project plan and other things, and I felt it sort of implied, but I think it's a great idea to have it articulated, but clearly, that's what I feel, but it's all the activities that have gone on this year. Apparently, this is all much...
Okay. All right. Okay, Tom?
Hi, Gibbs. Superintendent, could you elaborate for me, because I've learned it a lot, competency-based learning, but I don't quite understand what that means in a practical sense.
Dr. Hills could explain this better. Competency-based education is when the student has the opportunity to demonstrate that they understand their learning based on the competencies. So rather than, more project-based, so rather than, you know, a test, fill in the bubbles as it was back in the day, it's more project-based. There are standards and competencies that a student has to master, so it's graded, they're demonstrating their progress, and it's, their individual progress is graded, and they have different opportunities to demonstrate this learning, multiple pathways. So they might, it might be a project, it might be, not a speech, but they might be presenting something to the class, you know, rather than just a paper and pencil test. So demonstrating competencies.
Great, great, great question.
Okay, Charlie?
On the spot. Stephanie, could you read again what you would like incorporated, so that we can include that in a motion?
Well, we decided that we'd vote on the motion now, and the superintendent would bring back the exact wording at our next meeting, with the concept that we'll vote on it, that Stephanie's suggestion for adding would be included in the final product.
Why? I just wanted to hear it again.
But the wording hasn't, the thing is, the wording hasn't been specifically written yet.
The policy needs to be by November...
Okay, let's table it.
I'll make a motion to table.
In the policy, the goals are due before, I believe it's November 30.
Okay. All right, if the goals are due before November 30, we'll probably have a special meeting then between now and the end of the month to approve this, rather than proving it tonight with the proposed wording, even though it's not finalized.
You could waive the policy to vote in December. You could vote to extend the deadline to vote at the December meeting.
We have a deadline, not a special meeting.
We have three meetings next week.
Yeah, well, I mean, we already have three meetings for the finance committee coming up, so it depends on how many meetings you want to have for the term of the month in November. We can certainly have a special meeting at the lab, maybe the beginning of Thanksgiving week, if that works for everybody.
Is the board comfortable with waiving that date in that policy, just so we can hit the language? Is that of interest?
There's the other, we can vote to table it, and at the same time, vote to extend the deadline based on our policy to our December meeting.
I'd like to table it, and I'd like the policy, so we'll table it, and then consider that as a separate motion. I have a second in the conference for a motion.
So we have a motion to table it?
To table it.
To table it? But there was a previous motion to...
Yeah, there's a previous, there's a previous motion.
You have a previous motion. And so the current motion is to table it till December to...
No, to table it. Just to table it, and I think we can have a separate discussion about if we want to waive the policy, or if we want to have a special meeting.
Okay, all right. Who's making the motion to table?
I already didn't, Tom, I already said...
I didn't hear that part, so...
Can you amend your motion to, for the purpose of amending the second goal, to include attention to behavioral wellness in school?
That's going to be part of, it's going to be part of the discussion at the next board meeting, whether it be a simple or a special board meeting.
I'm just table it, and then we're going to have a discussion, but when we take it up again, have to, sort of, be a separate motion, and decide if we want to have a special meeting or vote to waive the policy.
Okay, it's moved by Brody to table, and Tom seconded, all those willing to table. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie? Dr. Jim?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair was no one, but that's okay. All right.
Do we want to waive the policy?
Well, that would be a motion.
I'll make a motion to waive the policy and take it up at a December meeting.
What specific policy are you talking about waiving, or is it just a requirement?
This board approved superintendent evaluation and goal setting last year.
And is that, that is a specific policy with letters? What is that?
The date, the date has to be before November 30. The date in the policy is November 30, so we have to waive that date until our December meeting.
Yeah, that is your.
So the motion, the motion by Brody is to waive the date in the policy until December, to extend it to our December meeting. Do I have a second? Seconded. Dr. Jim? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the date and extending it until our December meeting leads by saying aye. Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Aye.
And Chair was aye. Okay, so we'll extend that to our December meeting if we're up with that. Okay.
Okay, next item in superintendent report is Portrait of a Learner Survey for Students. This survey was shared with all staff last spring and with all parents just in the past few weeks. The next step for this group is to share this survey with students. So this is for review and action at the board.
Is there a motion to approve this survey for students?
Okay, Stephanie made a motion to approve the Portrait of a Learner Survey. Seconded by Jim Pittman. Discussion, go ahead, Jim.
I'm just curious why we asked students about, what the purpose is to ask them about their academic achievement or grades? Just, I'm not opposed to it, I'm just so I can understand.
Second, what page?
It says under, so this is the second page, and it's in two different places. Both surveys ask, what grades do you typically receive? And it says fours, threes, twos, ones. And that's question three, and then also on the, the word. Yeah, page, number 10 for the second survey, what grades do you typically receive? Fours, threes, two, ones. I'm just wondering what the purpose of that data gathering is for.
I think the Portrait of a Learner team is looking to understand the students and to get as much information about them as possible. So grades that they typically receive, what grade they're in, what grade level. Absolutely. What town they live in, and then correlating, you know, what kinds of students are saying, you know, what attributes or characteristics they feel are most important as a learner. So who is saying strong critical thinking and problem solving? Who is saying organization focus and self-direction? So that's something that the committee would like to look at.
Okay, I agree.
Yes, Jim. Dr. Jim.
Great, in order. I have one question, and I wondered about this when I was doing it in the past. Question number four and question number five. Question number four, who lives in elementary school without Middleton? Question six, question five asks about where do they live, Middleton's right in the middle of it. This is a four, five, six questionnaire. I wonder what happened to Middleton that they.
Thank you.
Charlie, can you give the answer off the face of the earth?
Because the survey is for K-12, so even though that section is about four, six, the questions are populated. So it goes from one section to the next. So we can look at that and see if there's any way to re-use it from the elementary, but it's because for seventh and, seventh and 12, they can use Middleton. But I'll get that for the elementary later.
I'll make sure it's accurate.
Is this considered an academic or a non-academic survey? Assume a non-academic survey?
That's why, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on the Portrait of a Learner Survey? Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair was aye as well. Okay.
Thank you. Next, LRTC automotive donation. So there's a letter in your packet. Jennifer Ulette, a teacher at LRTC, would like to donate her 2011 Honda Odyssey minivan to the LRTC automotive program. So she would like to donate it for work by the students.
She's not looking for any compensation at all, just donating it so the students have a vehicle to work on.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation.
By Brody, seconded by, seconded by Mary. Okay, any questions on that?
We recently accepted a donation, a telescope, and there was some discussion about the value and what value required a board approval. And I don't see any value assigned to this, this proposed donation. Do we have that information? And how does that, how does that square with the telescope we recently accepted?
She's not putting a value on it, because she's strictly donating it, so she's not looking for any tax deductions or any other value for the particular item itself. So it's strictly a donation to, for the student's benefit.
Right, but.
And we're not going to, we're gonna work on the vehicle, and we're not going to resell it.
After the last meeting, I did some research into that, and I double-checked the state statute. It strictly says monetary, and after doing some reading and having contacted the School Boards Association, everything. While it's typically best practice, if it, even if the mon, even if it's an in-kind donation, if the gift is worth a certain amount, it's good to have a public hearing for public transparency if it's not required. But when it's like a gift, there's no requirement for a public hearing, like the monetary gifts that municipalities have to operate under. So there's really, there's no requirement for a public hearing, and, you know, we're voting to accept the gift, and there's no requirement that there has to be a number value. But I looked into that before, because I raised that concern last time. I thought I'd do my due diligence before, you know, discussing if I was going to again.
Okay, any other questions about the donation of the vehicle to LRTC? Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And Chair was aye as well.
Thank you. And the last item is the 2023-2024 calendar update. So this is this current calendar. What, I'm bringing this to this board because we do not yet have the date of the New Hampshire primary. We estimated it to be March, is that correct? Sorry, we estimated it to be February 6. And that may be accurate, it may not be. We're hearing it may be January 23. I was hoping to have that date for you at this meeting, however, it's not been set. Sounds like Brody wants to speak to that. So what I would ask is an action from the board to allow us to make a change to the calendar when it is set.
Go ahead, Brody.
I could have sworn the Secretary of State announced that this week. That could be mistaken, though, but I would just call the Secretary of State's office, because I'm pretty sure they released the calendar for 24, 25, or 26.
As of last Friday on the news, he hadn't, he hadn't picked a date yet, but he may have since.
That's correct. As moderator, I would normally get informed with this every seat done and so forth.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the calendar with the insertion of the proper date once the Secretary of State, you know, picks.
Right, so allow us.
Yeah, allow us to move it from February, yeah, February 6, I guess it is, right?
Correct, yeah, correct.
From February 6 to whatever date the Secretary of State finally chooses. Okay, moved by Stephanie, seconded by Jim. Okay, all those in favor? Tom?
Aye.
Brody?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Chair was aye, okay.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
For the board, Mr. Chairman, we request a short recess.
We will take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're back in. Take a seat. Thank you.
I concluded the board policy process in the packet if people need that, when we get to that.
Okay, we're moving on to Chairman's report. We have no correspondence for this week. Yeah, it's on the Chairman's report. It's coming. I would say I didn't add it, agenda review, but we did, I did attend the New Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly. There were a few issues and quite a bit of conversation on a few of the proposed resolutions. Some of them passed, some of them didn't. The one that Concord submitted late about the food, actually Concord withdrew it and said there's too much work to be done to understand the financial implications and all of that. So not that every, I think everybody that spoke about it at all were very favorable to doing something, but knowing that it might take more than just a vote and saying, okay, we think that's a good idea. So Concord withdrew that section and moved forward. I am attending the NHIAA Finance Meeting this Thursday, and then the NHIAA Council Meeting next Thursday. And again, that's sports-related, and it's quite a challenge to understand all the sports stuff. Yeah, Brody?
Where could we find, does the School Boards Association have a list of the adopted resolutions?
They, yeah, we, they should be out shortly. They were just refining the votes and all that.
So probably send us an email and let us know.
Yeah, they should be, yeah, we should, I should be getting an email with the actual votes on all of them shortly.
Okay, thank you.
We can distribute those as soon as we get them.
I'd appreciate that, thanks.
Yeah. Okay, under Chairman's report, I'm gonna turn it over to Mary for an update on the strategic planning.
Thank you. This is an update for the board, having to do with the strategic planning group that's meeting. And you hopefully had an opportunity to read this report on the data on the board link. So October 10, we reviewed and developed a theory of action for each focus area. There's a review in your document, I think, of the focus areas. Should be familiar to you at this point. And then October 24, our busy day, create a student and community engagement action plan. And I think this really marries up well with Dr. Hill's report about using data to inform in the academics, obviously to inform instruction, but using data to inform the strategic plan, the goal being towards the vision of a learner. So I'm not gonna read each and every one of those things. I think you had a chance to read it. And the fact that the, the community survey went out, that's correct, yes? And I could go into details about that, but I don't wanna fill the airtime here if anybody has any questions for the other board members that were, that are on the strategic plan. Now would be a chance. Brody, here, here you go. Sorry. It's hard to be not get too serious.
I don't have any questions at this point, but I'll definitely reach out if I do.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and tomorrow we meet again.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Okay, we're gonna move on to committee reports, I believe. Okay, we're gonna go to academic affairs, which is going to take a couple of minutes. And in your packet, you do have the board policy process, so just familiarize yourself with that, because it has a lot to do with approving policies and how that process works. So, Charlene?
Thank you. So I have not, this is the first time I'm seeing BG, Board Policy Process, and it seems we've already gone through the Bs. So am I correct that this is gonna be something that, that we're gonna be looking at at the next meeting?
No, this policy is not in here to.
No, it's just for reference for the board, on how the process works.
Oh, okay, okay, cool.
Yeah, just informational for tonight.
Because it was, yeah, it was revised in 2022, so I, you know, since we've already gone through the Bs, I don't.
No, I think there's just been some emails.
Was this one that we, that we looked at before, like a couple of meetings back?
Last year.
Last year.
Oh, well, that's why it doesn't seem that current. Okay, well, maybe that's something we should look at.
Yeah, and it's really just informational for anything, just a little bit concerned on how things are going and, you know, process and all that, and this is where it is now, so.
Okay, so, as you all recalled from your, your process sheet and what we discussed at the last meeting, what we're going to be doing this evening is, I think, an efficient way to do this would be for motions to be made on these various policies as blocks that perhaps we would want to make a motion to approve, excuse me, the two policies recommended for adoption, and then we'll have a discussion. And one of the things I've asked Stephanie to do is to bring forward some of her suggested revisions that she was proposing for ACN, the nursing mother's accommodation, for us to look at during our discussion with the expectation that we will be, after discussion, voting on these particular policies for adoption. And then I think it would make sense to do the same thing for the Group Two, the ones that are recommended for revision. When I went over the policies in our electronic board packet, it looked to me as if the revisions that we had agreed on by consensus at the last meeting had been incorporated. And so this would be the time for us to have any further discussion of revisions that would be sought prior to our voting. And then, last but not least, recommended for withdrawal, I think it makes sense to handle those the same way. Someone will make a motion to approve, and there'll be a second, and then we'll have discussions, so that if there's further revisions sought, that would be the place for it to take, to occur, and then, then we'll take you to vote. So, Stephanie, do you wanna, are you ready to bring forward some of your revisions for? Oh, should we have a motion first? And then a second?
Let's have a motion for adopting Section 1, recommendation for adoption.
Okay, and then a second, and then just section.
Motion is seconded, and then we'll, we'll address the revisions on ACN.
I'll make the motion to adopt ACN and the suggested edits.
And I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Stephanie and seconded by Charlene, and, okay, you're on the, you got it, too, Stephanie.
So on policy ACN, the nursing mother's accommodations, I am making a couple edits. One is under Section B, the amount of time that we would want to be able to provide the accommodations, it says two weeks, I would like that to be one month. the accommodations, it says two weeks, I would like that to be one month because some of the accommodations, such as change in assignments, work schedules, things like that, are substantive. And then below that, on the third line in Section B, to take out Endeavor Two, that the district will meet the break in space needs of each nursing mother. And without advance notice, we should be able to. And then on the second page, under Section D, pull it, Point Four, to remove, have at a minimum an electrical outlet and a chair, and it says, if feasible, I feel like we should take out if feasible, every nursing mother should have access to an electrical outlet and a chair at the minimum. So those are my three edits. Any other, any discussion or question?
Any questions about those edits to ACN?
What were the first two, Adam, sorry?
In Section B, to change notification from two weeks to one month and take out the words endeavor two in the third line. One month.
One month, yeah.
Those were the two, those were the first edits?
Yep.
I guess my only thing is, is two weeks what's mandated by the federal government because if you expand to four weeks, you're making it so then you're requiring nursing mothers to have to tell the school district or their supervisor possibly two weeks more in advance than what is mandated by the feds. And I can understand why you would remove the word endeavor, but it gives us some, I mean, what if someone is making some unreasonable requests and they said, well, per your policy, you will meet, you know, the needs, and we say, well, we've endeavored to, we believe we've met your needs, but, you know, I mean, would they be able to have some kind of legal action where they'd say they're not abiding by their policy because this is what I say my needs are, even if they may not be realistic needs? That's nothing against nursing mothers, but that's protecting us from lawsuits and that's also understanding that, you know, we should have a policy that at least makes it so then we can have some leeway in case an employee is being unreasonable. So, I mean, I wouldn't support the, those two, I mean, the last revision, I think, is more than, you know, reasonable, I think you're right, you know, there should be, you know, if feasible, I don't think it's necessary there, we should give a nursing mother an outlet and, you know, a comfortable chair. But those first two, one, I think, could create, you know, possible legal issues, I think, very unlikely but possible, but the first edit you require, I'm not even sure if that's going to meet the federal mandates, and without that answer in front of me, I wouldn't support the amendments. I think we should explore it, though, and I don't have a problem with tabling ACN until the next meeting and figuring that out, but I also don't know when we need to meet those federal mandates, I don't know what the date is.
I don't know, the notification, however.
It's recommended two weeks in the policy and they quote three federal statutes, but I don't know the federal statute for any of it.
We can do it in two weeks.
I've been in this situation, I've been a nursing mother in this district, and I've been put in closets and behind file cabinets, and it's been terrible. And so I feel like I don't want any nursing mother to be in that situation, so, and for that to be considered acceptable.
I couldn't agree more, I co-sponsored legislation in Concord as a rep with Senator Bradley, that was the state version of the federal legislation that they passed. Sadly, it didn't pass in New Hampshire, but the feds overruled that and are, you know, requiring this for employers, but we have to consider, I mean, we have to consider the taxpayers in cases of possible lawsuit, make sure that we're set up in a place where we're doing reasonable, you know, where we're reasonably meeting their needs but not making it so then they get to dictate exactly every single need to the point where it could disrupt the workplace for other employees or for even like, you know, for other things that we need to, or other accommodations we need to make. And, I mean, changing to two weeks, obviously you recognize that could, you know, not, that could fly in the face of the mandates, so I, you know, I wouldn't support the first two edits, again, your last edit's fine, but I'm not going to support the last two edits.
Okay, what's your?
Sorry, the first two edits.
What's your plan, Stephanie?
Well, my concern, so my concern and my suggestion in the language is that when I was in this position and I said, I just need one period in the middle of the day at some point when I can, when I can do this and I can express milk, and I had to notify the school six months in advance to be able to do that, accommodate that in the schedule, and I was told this was an undue hardship, this was, that this was unfair, and it was, it was very challenging. And so I don't want anyone else to, I think we can do better, I think we should, Endeavor Two feels like, we'll try, but the rest of the language in that paragraph, it says, well, if it's too tough, we're not going to do it, and you can go make a complaint, is what I read from this. And I think we can do better.
I just, I never feel comfortable adopting a policy without legal counsel or at least NHSBA's legal counsel, understanding what kind of precautions or what kind of outcomes that could possibly lead to, and again, you know, it's a school district that will have to bear the burden of legal costs if there's a lawsuit or possibly settle to limit those costs and the taxidermist will pay, so that's just, it's nothing against pregnant mothers, Stephanie, it's about considering all of our stakeholders.
Of course, of course, and I think that's a really important consideration.
This is a new policy, so this will be very helpful. These are for the rights, so we haven't had this before.
Right.
Without legal counsel telling us what would result from those edits and what kind of, I mean, what are we opening ourselves up to by changing some of that first, and I think that's realistic.
Okay, Stephanie, are you looking to continue with the edits that you want? Or you want to go back to the original and, except for the edit on the second page?
Okay. Just let it be known that I think we can do better, but if the rest of the board is comfortable with at least giving nursing mothers an outlet and a chair, please.
There's much more here, there's much more here.
And I'm. Not if feasible, but just do it, please.
And so I was bringing up that this is a new policy in that, you know, speaking to your point, this didn't exist before, so now this is prohibiting discrimination and there's guidelines, suitable private areas for nursing, so this will certainly create a better policy and process for our nursing mothers.
I just have lots of empathy here.
Green light still on, okay. I'm thinking, you know, inspired by our superintendent's comment, this is a new policy that has not existed, and I would say, as there is a question in terms of legality on the period, we should go with the two weeks, and you folks who are on Academic Affairs can always revisit this, and as you get more information, you could come back and change a future date, but I think it's a priority to get this in effect now.
I agree, all right. Charlene.
So I just want to make sure I understand what we're planning on doing. At this point in time, I like the revisions you brought forward, I agree with Brody that there is a concern about the legality of extending the notification from two weeks to a month. I don't share your concerns about what happens if we strike Endeavor Two, but I can see your point, and we, you know, we could always get a legal counsel opinion on that, if that would open us up to liability. But I definitely agree that we can absolutely get rid of if feasible. So based on the discussion, I would think that we're ready to vote to accept your third revision with the understanding that Academic Affairs can seek legal counsel to revisit the suggested revision of extending the time to one month as well as removing Endeavor Two. Did that reflect what you want to have happen with that policy? And everybody's good with that.
Okay, are we done? All right, let's vote. We're voting on yes, ACN and FF. All right, all those in favor? Let's see, we have Tom.
Aye.
Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie. Dr. Jim. Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Charlene.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Dana.
Yes.
Chair. Okay. We're moving on now to policies under Section Two of Policies Recommended for Revision, DAF, DDA, DDA dash E, DFA, DFE, DH, DIA, DIAA, DIE, DJE, DKB, DM, DN, EH, EHR, EHAV, and IIC. Those could be moved as a block unless, well, we can move those as a block and then if there's any revisions that are requested, we can do that, so who would make that motion? Dr. Jim?
I'll second.
I just want to make sure that all of my colleagues had a chance to look at the policies that were in the packet for this week and were able to ascertain that the suggested revisions that we had agreed on by consensus at the last meeting had been incorporated. Okay, okay.
Okay, it's been agreed that all the revisions have been made properly, so, all those in favor of approving recommended for revision, second read, all the Ds and Es and an I policy, signal by saying aye, so we've got Tom. Brody.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Dr. Jim.
Yeah.
Jim Manning. Jim Pittman.
Yes.
Oh, Dr. Jim, I already did that thing, sorry about that. Charlene. Mary. Dana.
Yes.
And Chair votes aye as well, all right. So we're good with that. And finally, we need a motion then to withdraw the following policies, AEB, AEBR, BFF, BFFR, and JHBB. So I have a motion to remove those. Moved by Dr. Jim, seconded by Brody. All those in favor? Tom.
Aye.
Brody. Stephanie. Dr. Jim. Yeah, I got it. Dr. Jim. Jim Pittman. Charlene. Mary. Dana. Chair votes aye. All right, we're now on to Building and Maintenance, Jim Pittman. Update, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Dana.
So in that case, on, we'd have to turn around and bring back C and D under the ones we just deleted, but I guess that'll happen when the House.
Yeah, again, should that happen, those new, those policies can be reinstated at some point in the future, but, yeah. Yes, Tom.
We haven't had a teacher, but now we have a teacher.
Yeah.
We do.
Go ahead, Tom.
Do you have a teacher now?
Yeah. Building and Tracy, yeah.
Okay. Is there money in that trust account?
No.
Okay.
Every Thursday.
All right, okay, thank you.
Okay, we are on to Building and Maintenance, Mr. Pittman.
Thank you very much. My substantive report this month will be detailing the video conference that I was part of along with our Superintendent Arcealian and Kathy Blennis regarding the ESER funds for our projects in 2024, otherwise known as ESER III. We were on a video conference with the folks from Train, T-R-A-N-E, just in case you're wondering how that's spelled. There was an account manager, controls engineer, and HVAC specialist. Now currently, the estimate that they have, and this is not final, they're still working on this, is that for the work to be performed at Osiphe School, Carpenter School, and Crescent Lake, they're coming in at $5.7 to $5.8 million, was the figure put forth at that meeting. We're targeting $5 million for the project, so there is a gap there that's going to have to be worked out. There will be another meeting coming up November 21st to further discussion. But briefly, for each of the schools, as it stands currently, they're budgeting $2.7 million for the work here, Nosiphe Central School. We did, based on some conversations here, eliminate the gym as one of the spaces to be modified, and that's going to estimate saving us about $412,000 by leaving this room as it is. They're also putting in a $56,000 contingency for upgrading the electric service, which may or may not be needed, but that's a contingency fund that's currently in the estimate. We move over to Carpenter School, it's $1.77 million currently on the estimated from Train. They're having to evaluate a number of things there that are related to the location of the exterior units, which in many cases are put on the rooftop, but they're not sure that the structural integrity of the building is going to be adequate, so that's an open question and will have an effect on cost. They're also looking that this is, this may have historic building considerations that may limit what they can do and may affect the decisions, and IE mean the money will also be affected, so stay tuned, this is still, still being evaluated. And Crescent Lake School, which is more straightforward, $1.39 million is estimated for that. So all together, at this point, we're at $5.5 million with the changes up to October 11th, but they're working on the details. On the next phone call, hopefully we'll see their pencil has been sharpened and get us down to that $5 million level. Not unimportant in this is that equipment lead times are currently running 18 to 20 weeks for equipment, as we probably are aware that on the heels of COVID, getting any electrical equipment has been challenging. 18 to 20 weeks is considered an improvement from what it used to be, but nonetheless, they'll have to get equipment on order in order to receive it in the May to June 2024 window so that they can perform all this work during the summer. So time is a wasting. Some steps that are still to be done is final drawings, once they determine all of the mechanical needs of each of these locations have to be submitted to the state fire marshal for approval. Obviously, that probably will be a very quick turnaround. But once they get their approval and the final estimate's then, we can make the ESER application to Department of Education, while currently we have, the intent has received preliminary approval, but once all of the Ts are crossed, Is are dotted, and all that kind of stuff, then they have to go through that step. So we have another meeting scheduled for October 26th, it's a video, video call, I'm sorry, November 26th, I'm living in the past. Had been scheduled for the 26th, but Train had requested delay because they're looking for more data for electrical demand at the Carpenter School, so they wanted us to push it back, and you are correct, the new date is now November 21st. Also, just to tag on here, the next meeting of the Building and Maintenance Committee will be on December 7th at the SAU Building at 4 o'clock. Any questions on this information? Mr. Brody?
Thank you, Mr. Pittman. I guess, I had a question, I will, I know what my second question was, I already forgot my first one, but are we going, oh, I remember, I'm going to ask my first one first, no, I just remembered, I'm sorry, I'm scared of your brain right now. Will the board be voting on the final? of brain right now. Will the board be voting on the final, um, grant application or submission of the plan prior to it being sent to New Hampshire Ed?
May I defer to the higher authority. I don't, I, my opinion, this is only my opinion, is I think we've already voted to approve these activities, but I'm not as familiar with process, so.
Yeah, as far, as far as I know, we, we voted to move forward with the, with the activities that were scheduled, as long as they were within the budget, you know, budget criteria that was set. Um, so we don't have to revote. Um, if the Building and Maintenance Committee gets a, an acceptable quote, then they can move forward with the process without additional board voting.
Okay. Um, well, it's good I'm on the Building and Maintenance because I may have some opinions about Carpenter School, and I'm wondering if we're going to be engaging the Wolfborough Heritage Commission, um, depending on what kinds of changes we're going to be making to that building, how visible they are.
That's a good question, and I'm not sure if we know that.
I don't have the information that's very far away, but I have the name of the woman and the state, and I have her contact and the information that I need to submit to her, but I can't do that until I get stuff from Train. So I've already let Train know that, yes, I've gotten contact with the woman, I've got the form that we need to file, so I'm set, I'm just in a moment pattern.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the state, though, because I know the state has its historic.
That's who they.
But I'm wondering, I know, but I'm wondering if we'll also engage the Wolfborough Heritage Commission, because they have some input and say over how historical buildings are affected in Wolfborough.
We didn't get that impression, but yes, I'll go back and ask that.
I know, they provide input during the planning process, when the planning board does stuff, and when a project comes forward. I don't know what entirely their statutory authority is, but I know it probably would be good, because there's a lot of historians on that board and commission that provide input for major projects, or if you're changing a historic building.
Would this town have that information, or do you have that?
I could provide it to you, but it's right on the town's website, everyone who's on the, um, Wolfborough Historic Commission. But I can definitely send that to you, I'll make a note.
Okay, good points. Any other questions? Mary, yes.
I applaud the, I'm just going to yell. Um, good, great. You can have the old church museums. I hope everybody can hear me. I just applaud.
He is still.
I applaud the work, can you?
If you could use a mic, that would be great.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry. People at home want to hear you.
Oh, okay. Hello. I applaud the work that's, that's being done and, uh, funding for the HVAC. Recent, um, news relative to air quality as it related to, to COVID, but as a classroom teacher, there are other little germs floating around, too, and the air quality with HVAC is essential for the improvement of. And it also came up, Brody, about, it was a school system, it was, it was a historic building, and they were delayed because of the windows. And, and I'm confident that things will get worked out. Also, because of, of, of the fires in Canada, this HVAC system taking care of smoke coming from those that would impact health, perhaps even attendance, and finally, just issues of pollution from cars and whatnot. Uh, so, well done, and, uh, I'll write you a check.
No need, no need. It's federal money.
Oh, never mind that.
And, and just for the benefit of those who have asked questions about the ESER funds, not to, not to revisit the, the whole thing, but, uh, we may remember that in the depths of the COVID wars, that, uh, the federal government came forward with these three phases of ESER money, which were earmarked for, uh, related to health concerns that were prompted by the COVID epidemic. And there've been some questions before, as to, well, why did we decide to do this with the money, and why didn't we decide to reduce the tax burden with that money? And the answer is that that's not allowed. Uh, there were requirements, and we received a, a very handsome amount of money to improve our schools. So for all the reasons you mentioned, Mary, going forward, this is going to pay dividends for many years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. Okay, uh, under finance, obviously, you can see that our finance meetings are going to be on the 14th through the 16th at Crescent Lake School, as they've always been handled. Uh, and that's all I have for finance right at the moment, and, uh, nothing on human resources for tonight. Um, advanced planning, if you look down below, uh, early release on Wednesday, uh, no school Thursday and Friday of this week. Uh, Friday is Veterans Day celebration, although it is on Saturday this year, but don't really understand that, but it's okay. Um, academic affairs next meeting is on the 17th, no school the 22nd through the 24th, which is Thanksgiving, uh, and the Christmas, I guess it's Christmas concert at, uh, the Art Center on December 1st already. And our next school board meeting is in New Durham on December 4th, and that'll also be the preliminary, uh, budget presentation on the 4th of December. Okay, um, public input. No public left. Okay. Uh, moving on then, um, closing comments by, uh, board members on items that were on the agenda. Okay, Charlene.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My, um, comments are related to the agenda items, Student Representative Report. I was very excited to hear about all the goings on at Kingswood, and I'm especially excited to hear about the upcoming, uh, production of Beauty and the Beast. My, um, all three of my daughters were very involved in the Kingswood Theater Program, and because of that, I have a very, very good understanding of the time and effort that goes into producing one of, one of these fabulous programs. And I think it should go without saying, but I'm going to say it anyway, it is very much supported by our community. And, um, so I, I'm excited about that, and it's, um, my understanding that the October 9 event required our theater staff and students to disassemble the set.
That's not on the agenda today. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, I believe the production of Beauty and the Beast was very much on the agenda, and I'm providing information based on constituents' concerns.
I prefer that you keep your comments of things strictly on the agenda.
Okay, um, may I proceed?
Okay, last time, go ahead. Again, I think, just, again, I, I think we need to have the School Board Association come back in and explain the, uh, the proper protocol and also the proper, uh, position of school board members and what their responsibilities are. And I think we should have, have them come back in and talk about that again. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder. I think that, I think that in the effort to serve transparency, it is important for the public to know that, um, based on a public statement at the October 2nd meeting, I, I think that there was a reasonable expectation that various student activities and programs were not going to be disrupted, and I was made aware that our staff and students had to disassemble the set that they had built, and that there were Secret Service agents in the Art Center on Wednesday and Thursday of, of October 4th and 5th during rehearsals. I heard from various constituents that this was unnerving and alarming to some students who texted their concerns to their families. And speaking only as an individual board member, because per our board code of ethics, the board has not voted to designate me as a spokesperson, as someone who has appreciated the rich history of the, the theater program at the high school, I am just wanting to apologize to the families and staff who were blindsided by this disruption, and I feel that it was very appropriate, and I do not feel that when, um, when unanticipated consequences interfere with what our students have been working hard to produce, I do not think that that is something that, as a board member, I am comfortable with keeping silent about.
Mary?
I would just like to thank Dr. Hill and the math coaches, which sounds a little bit like a band name, so let us know when you go on the road, and certainly the students who are probably asleep now, I hope they are. Uh, that math activity was, was a lot of fun, and it was very, um, telling of the, the integration, the hands-on, and the kids were joyful in it, and, uh, and certainly the assessment information. Well done, bold little work, I get it.
Um, just to clarify why I separated my tabling motion from another motion, is because procedurally, under rules of order, they're very distinct and separate things, just so the boards are aware. That's just, um, but my, um, the real reason why I wanted to say something tonight is, um, to ask everyone to keep, uh, Selectmen Brian Robichaud of Brookfield and, um, and their thoughts and prayers. He recently had a stroke this week and is in Mass General. He's stabilized, but, um, he and the Brookfield Board of Selectmen open up their doors of their town meeting, um, building, and their town administrative building to us every year, and some of the few boards of Selectmen who actually attend our meetings, so, um, and I'm very good friends with the family, too, so just please think about the family and the Brookfield community.
Appreciate that, thank you. Okay, now, any other final comments? Okay, if I, if not, I will accept the motion to adjourn. Move by Brody? Seconded. Okay. All right. Tom, Brody, Stephanie, Dr. Jim, Jim Pittman, Charlene, Mary, Dana, Chair, we're out. Thank you.